Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order and we will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as advisory board to the city council. It is a responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendation on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permits and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plans or future land use amendment requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on rezoning request, major amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the Planning Commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the City 2015 Land Use Plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and pager. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good evening and welcome to the March 4th meeting of the City Planning Commission for the City of Sioux Falls. We'll first present the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are: Item number one is approval of the February 4th minutes of the regular meeting. Item number two is Platts. Item number three is an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls correcting clerical errors in certain zoning ordinances. Item number four is a rezone from the AG Agricultural District to South Ares C of the Garden Plans Village Development District at 26971 Minnesota Avenue. Item number five is a rezone from the C4 Plan Commercial District, the RD and RS2 Residential Districts, and the RC Recreation Conservation District to the C4 Plan Commercial District, RD Residential District, and RC Recreation Conservation District to adjust previously established zoning boundaries at the northeast corner of West 85th Streets and southwestern Avenue. Item number six is a rezone from the AG Agricultural District to the RS2 Residential District, RD Residential District, and RC Recreation Conservation District for allowed uses at East 57th Street and South Dubuque Avenue. Item number seven is a rezone from the RS2 Residential District to the RC Recreation Conservation District for allowed uses at North Powderhouse Road. Item number eight is a conditional use permit in the RS2 Residential District to allow daycare center at 2600 South Sycamore Avenue. Item number nine is a preliminary subdivision plan for Willow Run Track 4 addition for future development of single-family residential lots at East Torchwood Lane. And item number 10 is a preliminary subdivision plan for Majestic Meadows addition Phase 1 for future residential development in the RS2 and RD Residential Districts at East 41st Street South and South Six Mile Road. Are there any objections from the audience to any items listed on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll take commission action.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second?
Been moved in second. Commission action. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Look for call for both. Those of you in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying yes, please.
Yes.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11 is a resolution of the City of Sioux Falls of South Dakota adopting the SHAPE Sioux Falls Land Use and Development Policy. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Sam Trebelcock with the City Planning Office. And this evening, we'd like to give a fairly quick summary of the SHAPE Sioux Falls Land Use and Development Policies. Hopefully, a lot of you, all of you in the audience and the Planning Commission have heard about this process. We've had it, been involved with this process since early last year with quite a public involvement process. Now, what is SHAPE Sioux Falls, then? It's a community-wide visioning initiative to help determine the city's land use and development standards or development policies. The results of the initiative will be included in updates of the growth management plan and the zoning ordinance. Now, Planning Commission, I know so would be interested, why SHAPE Sioux Falls? Why is that important? Well, the last time the zoning ordinance was updated in Sioux Falls was 1983, about 26 years ago. So, there needs, what we're hearing, and what I think all of you have been hearing, is there needs to be more options and flexibility for my more diverse development opportunities to create more lively, secure, and distinctive places. We're getting away from in zoning right now, I think, getting away from just trying to separate incompatible land uses and want to create distinctive places, something more than just that separation. The comprehensive plan was last completely re-revised in 1995-96, and there was a minor revision done, and I believe in about 2003. Policies also in that area need to be updated and add what we hope to be a more visual aspect to this plan to help provide a direction to the development community and to the citizens. Now, the land use and development policies is just one aspect and one part of this comprehensive plan update. SHAPE Sioux Falls 2035 is our, is a horizon that we'll be looking at. Right now, we're at 2015, we're going to look out to 2035. We think that's really important to start, obviously moving forward and looking out that far. The land use and development policy, we thought it was important enough to bring forward to you in a package for you to take a look at. It was fairly new and important with the amount involved with the public involvement process. We wanted to look, have you look at that chapter in depth in this meeting. We will bring back the entire comprehensive plan for you later this year, including all the remaining chapters, including the growth area analysis, transportation, school parks, neighborhood conservation. The entire comprehensive plan will be included, and again, you'll be looking at land use and development policies as part of that. Now, the SHAPE Sioux Falls Land Use and Development Policies steps and the process that we had, I just wanted to take you quickly back and refresh your memory. We started out with the visual listening survey back in March. We really had a great public involvement process, a number of people involved in that. Stakeholder meetings, there was an interpretation of the visual listening survey. There was 52 participants in those meetings and six different meetings. They helped us interpret those visual listening survey results and bring a real-world aspect to some of those results. And then we had the review committee. A number of members of the review committee are here tonight. We had 20 different members of the review committee, and I believe there's six here. Chad Van Buskirk is here tonight, April Shavey, Eric Willison, Dennis Gillum, Councilman Staggers, Monty Miller, and also Jesse Schmidt with the Planning Commission. I'd like to thank all those members for being here tonight. Some of them may be willing to speak later on. They assisted in preparing the land use and developments policies. As part of the SHAPE Sioux Falls process, they actually went through every single one of these policies. And we actually voted on every single one of these policies, and I'll kind of go through that process a little bit later here. We then had a public open house on December 17th. Now, you'll notice as you were walking in or when you're walking out here, the boards from those meetings are in the overflow room. If you get a chance, take a look at some of those. It gives you a really good idea of some of the visuals that we tried to put together as part of this plan. Now, the formal approval process, we're in that stage now, and we'll go from there. The visual listening survey had almost 1,500 people that took that survey, and we felt that was important to remind you. It's really hard to get long-range public involvement, and this was just, we felt, a really good way of doing that, getting the, all the citizens involved, and I think it worked out pretty well in that regard. On the web, we have all these different reports that are on the web, the visual listening survey reports, the stakeholder meeting report, and also the land use and development policies. One of the things that we did during those review committee meetings is that we actually voted on every single one of those policies, and you'll see there's a pie chart. There's one of the documents in there, takes you through each one of those and what the votes actually were. And then we put together the actual land use and development policies and try to bring that all together. Summary of some of the citizen preferences, we tried to bring forward many of those recommendations from, that we heard from the visual listening survey, and bring those forward to the land use and development policies, and hopefully you noticed that. Such things as updating sign standards, quality landscaping, incorporation of quality open space, pedestrian architectural scale standards and policies, encouragement of mixed-use development. We heard an awful lot of that, and bringing that option forward to Sioux Falls. Now, the land use and development policies consists of actually eight different sections, and I'm going to take you through a few of those sections. But first, I want to, on the next slide, talk a little bit about exactly what are policies. Now, policies are typically promulgated or put into action through official written plans and adopted through a legal process by the governing body. So, you would be recommending, and then council would be actually adopting or promulgating these policies. The government implements these policies by the execution of policies through an ordinance, budgets, administrative rules, or standards. In this case, many of the standards or policies that we'd be implementing would be adopted through later on in the zoning ordinance. It could be a subdivision ordinance, or it could be a budget, different ways that it could be actually implemented. The Planning Commission roles, that's right, Planning Commission role, I just wanted to reference that. You don't do this every day. It is certainly your function and duty as the Planning Commission to propose a plan for the physical development of the city. That's required by state law and required by city charter or city ordinance. Two objectives that we have in this process, one is to inform the development community. We see that developers really dislike uncertainty and inconsistency, so we think it's important to provide them with an overall direction for site design and create, in this case, a compendium of best practices, a place that they can go and look and what does, what's the city's direction in terms of development policies. And that's why we've tried so hard to illustrate these to this degree. The second objective is to create a zoning regulation consistency. You have to have, as part of your comprehensive plan, your zoning ordinances must be consistent with your plan, and so we've tried to do that through this process. And what you'll notice throughout the development policies is there's red, yellow, or green text. When we went through and voted, what the red represents is either a strong agreement by the committee that this was something they really felt was important, or it was something they felt should be a minimum requirement. That's what the red is designating. So, we're trying to develop levels here. Yellow represents a moderate agreement in some cases, or that's something they'd like to see as an incentive. Now, incentives could include such things later on when you go to the zoning ordinance as density bonuses, an expedited plan review, or additional flexibility in the design review process. That would all be something that we'd put together as part of the zoning ordinance. Green represents either a general agreement or a desire that just this policy's encouraged. It probably wouldn't be something that we'd even push really hard as a requirement in the zoning ordinance, but we think it's important enough, citizens said, hey, this is something we really think is important that you include in your development policies and try to encourage it. Couple examples that come right from the development policies. A minimum requirement, require parking facilities and site design to provide good connections between public sidewalks and principal building entrances. That was one thing that they felt was really important that we require as a minimum requirement. An example of a strong agreement was to allow and encourage an option for vertical mixed use. We're not requiring that everybody do mixed use, but we said, hey, this is something we really feel strongly that is important enough, we need to bring this into our zoning ordinances. So, allow that as an option. Examples of some of the yellow would be, as an incentive, provide development incentives to create at least one active and strategically located open space into the design of major commercial and office and mixed-use development projects. Some kind of, maybe a density bonus would be allowed if this is something that they could do, would do. Moderate agreement, public open spaces should be accessible and within convenient walking distance of areas such as residential neighborhoods. We're not saying that this is a minimum requirement, but that is something that they should look at strongly doing. Next one, green, encourage, encourage locust collector streets and commercial mixed use and office areas to be distinguished by distinctive streetscape elements. Nor are we saying you have to do this, but this is something likely you would do as part of a public project, and we're just saying that this is something we think is important enough that there was general agreement and we should encourage this. General agreement, innovative subdivision and street designs may vary with the width of the boulevard and the alignment of the sidewalk, something that sometimes we don't necessarily do all the time, and we're saying this is something that we would allow. Take you through just some quickly, some, each one of the chapters, a couple of each one. In the vertical mixed use section, we're looking at some of the policies to, in vertical mixed use areas require on-street parking. We think that's an important part of, we're not saying you have to require on-street parking everywhere, just within, if you're doing the vertical mixed use option. Require vertical mixed use buildings sited at street intersections to have features that address the corners. A lot of what you're doing in vertical mixed use areas is very similar to the downtown areas, so we want to have the same feel, and that's what we're trying to place into some of these policies. Next slide. Horizontal mixed use, there is a difference between the two quickly. Vertical mixed use is, within the same building, you might have a different use. Horizontal is within the same development, is linked somehow in a pedestrian fashion with sidewalks and connections. Establish a special mixed-use zoning district to address horizontal mixed-use developments. So, again, allow this option. Provide development incentives to strongly encourage all components within a horizontal mixed-use development to be connected by attractive and convenient pedestrian systems. In the streetscape section, sidewalks and pedestrian areas should be designed or positioned to accommodate outdoor activity. And also, large auto-oriented and pedestrian-oriented mixed-use developments shall be served by a network of internal streets. We talked quite a bit about internal streets, how important it is to have those, very similar to the public street aspects that you have in public streets. Signage section, allow flexibility for large-scale projects, mixed-use developments, or planned unit developments to follow signage master plans. And also, off-site campus signs should be allowed and provide developers with that option for internal sign systems that identify that as a campus of the development. In the multimodal section, Sioux Falls Long Range Plan shall define a complete streets network. It's something that we'll be doing as part of the, you'll see in some of the, probably the transportation section of the plan, and require, in most situations, that developments provide convenient parking facilities for bicycles. Next section. Open space, strongly support allowing smaller private open spaces if developments are planned or clustered around common open spaces, and allow flexibility with the depth of required landscaping and building setbacks. This is allowing additional densities than we have right now in our zoning ordinance, and I think the committee was, felt that was important. Parking, requirements for commercial and office development should have flexibility to provide the amount of parking needed during normal operations. Getting away from some of the minimum parking guidelines, in a lot of places, they're going to maximum parking or looking for more flexible options such as shared parking. Require parking lot circulation that is clear to the users. They thought that was important, that we start looking at that. Transition highlights, encourage, the transition section, encourage multifamily buildings to be designed to reduce their parent scale and provide development incentives that allow architectural techniques to be added as details and benefits to contextual elements. Now, as I mentioned earlier, we do have members of the committee here this evening, and I know at least one that was willing to speak, and there may be others too that can help answer some of your questions. What I'd like to do is allow Dennis Gillum to come up and say a couple words, and then if anybody else is willing to, I'd allow that too.
Hello, my name is Dennis Gillum. I live at 3917 West 89th Street here in Sioux Falls. And I'm also the senior property manager for the Empire Mall and a member of the SHAPE Sioux Falls Committee. So, just wanted to give you a little insight into how this all got started for me. I actually started the process, like many others on the committee, by taking the survey that was offered to the public. And it was offered at several locations, and I actually took it at two of them. Wanted to find out if they were presenting it differently as a concerned citizen and a business person. I wanted to find out if they were presenting it differently to different sides of the city, and I wanted to find out what the different parts of the city were saying to each other, you know, whether it was the same kind of comments or not. From there, as a concerned citizen, like I said, I asked to be part of this continuing process and was selected to be part of the commercial focus group to review the findings of the community, try to analyze the data, and come up with the best ways possible to continue the growth of our city while encouraging enhancements and protecting the rights of the citizens. After the different focus groups met and to get that general input, I was selected as a member of this SHAPE Sioux Falls Review Committee with our first meeting on June 19th of '08. So, we go back all the way to April of last year through June, and then all the way into Christmas practically, and then here tonight. The process was agonizing at first, but through the efforts of Jeff Schmidt and Sam Trebelcock, they were able to find ways to get the constructive communication from the committee and still move things forward. This could not have been a better mix of personalities and interests, and there were many times that discussions were, shall I say, entertaining, and voting never was unanimous, but it was always constructive. And I believe that the will of the committee shows through in the graphs and information that is being presented tonight. That's it. And I'll be glad to answer questions if you like.
Thank you, Dennis, for serving on that committee. Any questions for Dennis? Any other members of the SHAPE Sioux Falls Committee have any comments they'd like to share?
I was also part of the SHAPE Sioux Falls Committee, and I trust all of you had an opportunity to take a look at this, lots of rather large document here with lots of pictures and recommendations. With a large document like this, dealing with policy, it's almost inevitable that there's going to be good policy and then maybe there's some bad policy within the document. And I think it's also true with this document before you this evening. The good and bad also might be compounded by the fact that, in many ways, this is primarily an aesthetics document. And when you talk about aesthetics, I think we all realize that aesthetics can be very, very subjective, and this was brought out as we discussed the various issues on the committee. As Dennis said, we had a lot of interesting conversations and debate. One example was over signs. I remember there was one member of the committee who just loved monumental signs, and he was pushing that that be mandatory, whereas there were other people who were saying, well, you know, maybe we ought to have more flexibility there, or maybe we should just let the property owner decide what the sign should be like. Other examples of lots of interesting debate concerned the configuration of parking lots and landscaping, and we had a lot of conversation about that. But let me mention, a particularly good policy within the documents that you received is something that Sam mentioned, and that is, there is a lot of permissive policy in the document that provides flexibility. A lot of this flexibility would be able to be used by developers to institute smart growth principles, or if you'd like to say, mixed use. And I think that is something, as Sam mentioned, that we really need here in Sioux Falls. We've become rather rigid in our thinking about development. This would be good to have mixed use. However, having said that, that's a really good part of the policy, what happens next is, is that then we start regulating mixed use, and we have a lot of regulations in this document as to how mixed use should be conducted. And of course, when you talk about regulation, what happens? Well, you talk about more control, and then besides more control, most of the time, you also talk about additional costs. So, this is a concern I have. I'm glad we're going to try to get mixed use, but then we have all this additional regulation, which is going to be more controlling and cost the developers more. And this is something we have to be very concerned about here in Sioux Falls, increasing the cost of building in Sioux Falls, because that's what regulation does, especially at a time right now with our national economy and with the economy in Sioux Falls not doing as well as it should. We certainly do not want to have increased costs on building. During right now, the number of new homes built during January, or permits, I should say, for January and February, half of what they were last year. So, we don't want to add additional costs. Thought it was kind of interesting that Del Rapids is actually trying to reduce costs. You might have noticed in the Argus Leader that to get a building permit up there now, I believe, costs $25, because they want to encourage people to build in Del Rapids during this downturn in the economy. So, I guess I would urge the committee to, the commission, to take a close look at the document before you, and I think it would be wise to delete the mandatory regulations. There are, you know, a large number of mandatory regulations in this document, but at the same time, keep the permissive and voluntary policy that is in the document, because there is a lot of good policy there. Does anybody have any questions?
Kermit, it's such a pleasure to see you here this evening. You were on the committee that started back in April, and you-
Yes, I attended every, every meeting.
You participated in every meeting?
Yes.
The document before us, the issues on these things were voted by-
Yes.
The committee?
Yes. Now, let me just clarify that maybe a little bit, too. We had 20 formal members of the committee. Not all 20 members showed up at every meeting, so sometimes we might have 10 people voting, or 13 people voting, or 12 people. So, you know, when we talk about approving this, it is a rather small number of people approving these different policies.
Do some of the other members share your concern about the mandatory?
Well, during the voting, they're, it depended on the vote, to be quite frank. Depending on the issue, there were some people that were concerned about some of the mandatory regulations. Also, let me mention that some of the policies that were brought before us, I'd say maybe a handful, we decided not even to bring before the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Kermit.
Any other questions for Commissioner Staggers? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other audience members care to discuss the- Any other audience members care to discuss the Shapes Sioux Falls? No? Commission discussion?
Madam Chair, I participated in the first two steps, the visual survey and the second set of committees. And I think the product that the committee came up with is a tremendous step forward for the city of Sioux Falls. And very necessary. We've wrestled many, many times with developments and zoning because there are so many different ordinances now that don't necessarily apply to the way things need to be designed, or situated, or organized on a site within our, within our city. So, I would make the motion that we approve this and send it to City Council. I think that there's still a lot of work to be done to turn this into the ordinances. And I suspect that that will be done, not in a vacuum, but in a public sense as well. But I think as a commission, a lot of what we saw today, and a lot of the detail that will ultimately come out of this will help us do our jobs better. And certainly, I believe, make the city of Sioux Falls a better place to live than it is already. Thank you.
Meredith, I agree with you, and I'll second the motion.
Been motioned and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 12 is an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls amending the revised ordinances of the city for campgrounds and travel trailers. Staff report?
Good evening. I'm Shawna Goldammer, the Zoning Enforcement Manager. Before you this evening is a request to change the zoning ordinance, to change the definition of campgrounds, to clarify that campgrounds are not the place for residences and they are, and what temporary is, is no more than 180 days. Currently, campgrounds are allowed in commercial zoning districts of C2, general commercial, and C4 planned commercial district. They're also allowed in the agricultural district. This land use, campgrounds, are not allowed in any residential district. And they are not considered residential uses. You can see in, before you, the ordinance proposed changes the definition from allowing, defining campgrounds or camp parking areas as a place where you can park camping units as temporary living quarters to a place that travel trailers are a place, are a place to park travel trailers away from the place of residence of an occupant and doesn't constitute a principal residence of the occupant. You also notice that in other sections of the ordinance, we are defining what temporary is, which is a period of time that is less than 180 days. Because the ordinance does allow for implementation of policies set forth in the 2015 Growth Management Plan, it works toward achieving the goal of enhancing an identity of Sioux Falls as a unique place of heritage, culture, and setting, which the residents can take pride in, staff does recommend approval of the zoning ordinance amendment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Shawna.
Shawna, I know in other places across the country, and I don't think that campground is the right word, but they actually sell pieces of land to people to do more permanent camping residency. Is that available within our ordinance structure?
It is. We do have a place to accommodate, in the MH Residential District does accommodate the manufactured home. So, there are places that, and a licensed manufactured home park, certain ones within the city limits do allow campers.
So, there is a place for permanent residency if somebody wanted to live in a camper?
Absolutely, yes.
Within, okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Anita, Shawna, but a campground would not be allowed to do that. I, I've been thinking of the same thing Anita just brought up, other parts of the country. A lot of people per se will go down south and fall into a campground and stay there for whatever length of time. And I think some of those parks are actually selling the spots now to people. You're saying that something like that's allowed, but it would have to be in a mobile, something with a mobile home park designation.
Licensed manufactured home park. Mm-hmm. Yes. And there are, there are manufactured home parks that would allow these types of units in their residential setting. Campground is a commercial use.
Campground would not be one.
Campground would not be an appropriate place for, for residents.
Obviously, this must be an issue to zoning. Obviously, it must be an issue with some of our campgrounds that we have in our city at this time.
We feel as zoning enforcement that it is a necessary amendment to the zoning ordinance, yes.
It would be your office that would oversee that. They would be allowed to stay there for up to six months.
Correct. And the concern in speaking with some of the campground owners was that there are, there are people who perhaps do construction on the interstates or something like that, that would want to stay in the city in a campground while the construction was going on. And 180 days was the magic number, if you will.
So, that individual might be here for the summer, leave and go home, come back next summer, and the six months would start over again.
That's right.
Thank you, Shawna.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Shawna. Anybody else? Anyone from the audience care to speak on item number 12? Can you come to the podium, please?
Danielle Merrill from 5829 West King Arthur Drive in Sioux Falls. I was wondering if there is a minimum timeframe away if the person stays 180 days and then were to leave, is it a 30-day timeframe, then they could come back and do another 180 days? I was wondering if that was addressed.
Can you repeat your question? I'm really interested in the light, so I couldn't hear your question.
I was wondering if there was a minimum of timeframe of, okay, if they were to stay 180 days and then to leave, what's the minimum length of time they needed to depart? 30 days? And then they can return for another 180 days? Okay, so.
The way it's structured is if they were in the same spot for more than 180 days in the same campground, that would be, would not be allowed. But if they move it around within the same campground every 180 days, that would be allowed.
So, you're saying there is no minimum time requirement from-
In between moving it and taking, you wouldn't have to remove it from that campground, just that particular spot.
Shawna, I think I hear what you'd like to accomplish, but aren't we just kind of saying, look, you can stay at this spot for six months, move to another spot, you can stay there for six months? Would they then not be in compliance with this ordinance?
They would be. They would be in compliance with this ordinance if they're moving around. That, what we're trying to accomplish here is to determine what temporary is and what permanent is, based on life safety issues that may arise if a camper is permanently placed in a campground rather than in a residential zoning district or a residential setup where it can be accommodated for utilities, et cetera.
Okay.
So, Shawna, what you're saying is that there are campers out there that have had maybe some permanent things added to them in a temporary-
In a campground.
In a campground that's a temporary setting.
Correct.
Okay. Any other members of the audience?
Dwayne, excuse me, Dwayne Spader, 5417 North Indiana Avenue. I had several questions, and I apologize because I would have liked to pursue this a little further before this evening even, but because of my extensive travels and that, I was unable to. But I would like to ask, why are they even trying to do this? What issue caused this? Our preference is terribly written, but I'd like to, what issue caused planning and zoning to try to write this? Could I have that?
Do you want to do all your questions and we'll answer them, or do you want to do one at a time?
Well, I'd like to know what issue caused it. I'd like to know who wrote it. It's terribly written. I, I don't mean to put you down, but it is, folks, as a campground owner, you're going to eliminate 20% of my RVers that come in the way it's written. It's incorrect in many of its vocabulary, and I'd like to know why it's such an important thing for the city, because I think there's only two campgrounds in city limits, correct? Three. Okay, well, I don't know if you're having trouble with the others, if you're having trouble with ours, I'd like to know, but I, I'm confused by what they're trying to accomplish.
The cause is that we have a problem with campers becoming permanently placed in, in campgrounds in the city limits. Now, I don't, I don't believe I have an ongoing complaint in your campground, but that was the cause, is that we need to have a definition of what is temporary.
What's wrong with that if they're in the campground?
We needed to not have them permanent. We wanted to, and then you asked also who wrote this ordinance. It was reviewed and approved by the city attorney's office.
Did you have any other questions?
Now, I guess I still didn't get my question answered, is what's wrong if someone wants to stay in the campground? If they live RV. 20% of the RVers are full timers. The way the ordinance reads, if it's a full time, if they're using it as a full-time residence, I got to kick them out of my campground. That's the way, the way I interpreted the ordinance, I mean, it's, it's, and then the 180 days, I'm just confused, that's why they're, what they're trying to accomplish. And I know you're telling me then, if, if somebody wants to come in my campground and I agree to allow them to stay there, and we just spend a lot of money investing hours and with very costly expenditures from the city, that I cannot have people stay there all year long if I choose to do it? That's what you're saying, correct? And what's wrong with that?
Dwayne, I think the, if I might, I think what I, what I sense here is people that might be using their camper as a full-time home. I think your campground was designed to accommodate people that weren't going to be living in it like a modular home park. I think if that would have been the thought, I think maybe access to your park for fire trucks, such like that, there could possibly have been a change there. And I think some of the issue is, is this a safe place to have, is a campground a safe place to have people living on a full-time basis? At your campground, you, you mentioned you might lose 20% of your business. Do you have 20 year-round people living in their camper?
For 20% of our people, this is, I'm going to say, not constituting the principal place of residence. There's many full-time RVers. It is their principal place of residence, wherever they stay. And this, this just says they can't, can't be there. I mean, the way it reads. And not constituting the principal place of residence of the occupants. That disqualifies them from staying in our campground, the way it reads. I mean, this is terribly written. I'll tell you, it's terribly written, the terminology is bad, the intent, I think, is more than just the campgrounds, is my interpretation of it. I think it's, can be deceptive, and I, I got to be careful what I say, but I've had some of that deceptive writing before.
Dwayne, do you have people living in your campground on a year-round basis?
We have people that want to stay there as, as long as we're open, if we allow them, yes.
Year-round, year-round?
No. No, we're open from April 1st to October 15th. But I've toyed with the idea of putting some, some year-round potential, and it's just the water and the thing, if they want to stay, we have requests for it. And I don't, if our campground chose us to do that, I, I can't understand why, why it should not be allowed.
I would think most people with an RV would want to head south.
They do. That's why we've chosen not to do it at this time, but-
We can certainly talk and look at the way it's written, you know, as far as having a degree of comfort there, but what we're trying to get a handle on is how big a problem is this? Apparently, there has been a complaint filed on one of the campgrounds.
I can't understand, why can't the campground take care of it? The way the ordinance read before, I mean, a campground is for RV units, camping units. Then it's up to the individual campground owner to place what he needs. I, I'm, and the way you're just trying to take, go way beyond the scope, the way this reads. And 180 days don't make sense if they can move one thing. I mean, that, that, again, it's the individual campground owner that needs to be held accountable, not the residents that are allowed in there. And I should be able to allow, to allow campers in my park if I want to, I've invested heavily in it, to sit there all year long if I chose to do it. Yes, I should. What's wrong with that?
I don't think parking the camper out there is, is a problem. I think, the issue, I think, is living in the campground, you're living in the camper.
What's wrong with that?
Well, I think-
If, if the people choose to.
Health and safety issues.
Again, as Kenny said, campgrounds are, are temporary places where people go. And I think Shawna addressed that. If you want to live there permanently, then you need to maybe look at a mobile home. And from what it sounds like, Mr. Spader, your, your people and what you do at your campground really doesn't fall outside of the scope of what, what they're trying to achieve.
But if I chose to make my, allow people to park all year long in my campground, which I should have the right to do, because it's hard to pay for the campground with just, just what the taxes are, and I've toyed with the idea, what can we do to get additional income in the campground for it? And I should be allowed to if I want to, and they want, the full timers, some of them choose to, but definitely over 180 days. And in the way it reads, any full timer is theoretically illegal in my campground. That's the way it reads.
Jeff, do you have something to add?
I, I think that, again, I think that just, I, I see it as a control that is totally out of place for the investment that those of us who have in campgrounds, for you to come in and, and say this. I mean, I just think it's, it's totally, and the way it's written, it's, it's written bad, it's written improper, the other people, it's written flexible, and I've been this before, so that they can interpret it the way the city wants to interpret it, which does, and it's, it's just not good. I'm sorry, folks.
Dwayne, were you notified of-
Mr. Spader and I've had communication before, and I think we dialogued pretty well, so I wanted to make sure that we had a chance to talk tonight. And I understand that he travels very frequently, and was, that was the first comment he had, that he did not have a chance to really communicate and, and get involved in this one. But he was one of the first ones that we tried to communicate and discuss this with. And I would appreciate and hope that he would stop continuing to say how badly and poorly this is written, because if he has some changes and suggestions, we would like to work with him to address those versus continuing to stand up here and talk like that about myself and staff and anybody else that's up here, trying to work with people. That was the first thing we did, was get this information out to try to address an issue. Now, from there, yes, we do have violations, we have complaints, and as Sam mentioned at the very beginning, we have a zoning ordinance from 1982 that is terribly outdated. Things have changed, as Mr. Spader's mentioning, from 1982. People live differently, they travel differently. We have to update the campground ordinance, and that's what staff's tried to do. We looked at state law, and we looked at the busiest, heaviest-traveled area in the state of South Dakota, Rapid City, to find out how they did their campgrounds and their conditions, and we drafted our ordinance based on that. And then we went out to the community and tried to get some comments. So, again, I'd just like to ask planning commission, as well as the people here, if they have suggestions and ideas. We're not opposed to looking at that, but we do have some serious issues in this community. Based on what Kenny just brought up is, we don't have violations at Mr. Spader's facility, not that I'm aware of, I don't do zoning violations. However, there are some. They're not equipped to handle full-time, 365 days a year for year after year after year of people living there, and that's what we're trying to address.
Jeff, wouldn't there be different ordinances that would pertain to that if he wanted to turn it into a mobile home park instead?
And maybe that's what- Correct, maybe that's what we'd have to look at, is to really change the ordinance. All we tried to do was, there was a situation there that says campgrounds are allowed for temporary occupancy. And you went, temporary is what? Okay, temporary for you is, I'm there Friday, Saturday, Sunday. For temporary for Mr. Spader is not Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And so we went, well, it's not, it's not the weekend. And as Shawna mentioned, we kind of went, and people said, look, it's probably more like six months, nine months. So, that's the feedback we got from the advocacy groups, and we went with 180 days. But it's not probably 3,690 days either, that's not temporary.
Madam Chair, Jeff, you said you had talked to Rapid City and looked at their ordinance. Do they have the 180 days there, is that part of their ordinance there?
I can't remember if they had a year, or if they had six months. I think it had six months, yeah.
That seems to be one of the issues.
Especially in the Midwest, you know? And again, we weren't totally set on six months, it seemed appropriate, we got good response from that, but we could go a little beyond that. Our whole thing was, it wasn't temporary, it wasn't to be a weekend, and it wasn't to be 10 years either.
Thank you.
Jeff, did I hear, Madam Chair, Jeff, did I hear there's three campgrounds? And staff had...
In the city limits, yeah.
Have mailed letters?
My scientific method, I Googled it.
You had sent a letter to the owners of all three campgrounds?
I sent a memo to all the three in the city limits. Now, there's a couple of them that are not in the city limits, that are in pretty close proximity to Sioux Falls. But I did, I sent them to the owners of the campgrounds within the city limits. About three weeks ago, notifying them, giving a copy of the proposal, an early draft, also letting them know when the public hearing dates were, and my phone number to please contact me with comments if they had concerns.
Were you contacted by anyone?
I was not contacted by anyone.
Do you feel we could make Mr. Spader feel a little bit better, deferring this for 30 days, and walking through this with the language of this ordinance?
I guess you could ask him that.
Dwayne, do you think there would be any positive point in perhaps delaying this, or asking for a deferral for 30 days? Give you a chance to sit down with staff to maybe talk about the language? Or are you just adamantly against...
No, I'm not adamantly against, there are some issues in here that I just cannot support, period. The verbiage is, and some of the things that, no way could I support. Am I opposed to having a viable campground ordinance? Yes, I'm not opposed to that. The city, they didn't have a bad one when they started out with, they took a good one and made it bad, is what my belief is. And it totally violates, I mean, it's just, I'm sorry, but it's bad. The terminology, the vocabulary, everything about it is bad. And the connotations that can be derived on it, they could come in and chase 20% of my campers out, because 20% of my campers are full timers, even though they only stay there a few times, but this prohibits from letting anybody who has a full-time occupancy...
When you say full timers, do you mean they might be there in the summer and leave their units, sit there through the winter?
No, they live in their, they live in their RV full-time all year long. And that's common, many, many, I don't have to take time, I remember the first time, 1977, when a guy told me he was going to do the, sell his house and live in the RV, and I thought, are you crazy? But this is a trend that's happening right now. And according to this ordinance, those full timers cannot camp in my campground, the way it reads, because it's their permanent occupancy. That's the way this reads.
Dwayne, does your schedule...
And yes, I am opposed to the 180-day limit too. If my campground chooses to allow somebody to stay in there longer, we should have that right. We've invested in it, it's a campground, under the campground zoning, and why should we not be able to?
Dwayne, does your schedule allow, if we were to defer this for 30 days to...
I'm gone, and if it went to the city council, I'm going to be gone, I'm gone until April 10th almost. I think if we get, I'll be in two days between now and April 10th. If we follow my present schedule.
Dwayne, I can't speak for the other commissioners, but looking at this and visiting with staff, I came here tonight in support of this ordinance. I know you've got some concerns with it, and I'm sitting here thinking, gosh, am I missing the verbiage in this? And you've got me kind of second-thinking myself, where a deferral wouldn't offend me, I don't know what it might or might not do to staff.
Just take this, just let me, if this will help you. And not constituting the principal place of residence of the occupants. Many of ours, of ours are full-time RVers that stay in our campground. And that there says, that is their principal residence.
But I read that as, the intent of that, to me, is principal place being that actual place where you park, not that it's their principal residence, but just...
Hasn't what this says so.
That's an interpretation.
At the first line, it says, shall mean a plot of ground for public use upon, which are two more campsites. So, we're talking about the plot of ground, we're not talking about the person that comes to occupy the area. We're talking about the plot of ground. And Shawna referenced the question earlier, you said you're open for seven months out of the year. And so if I stay, I want to stay in your campground for seven months, and Shawna, if I'm wrong, please correct me, I can stay in Lot A for six months, and then I need to move. So, I can go to Lot F for one month, and then I need to leave because you're closing anyway, correct?
Folks, I'm taking too much time. I have been in, I've had bad, bad experience with city in previous things, and I actually come and ask the city council, it's on tape, if you want me to dig it up, to cancel the whole thing, because the way it was written and left to interpretation, they could interpret it different than it was written, and I think this has the same thing. I'm sorry, but I got to say that through experience. And there are people in the room that love to write, if I'm, I shouldn't say this, but it's good for you to hear. There's an individual sitting in the room, he knows who he is. Okay, so, he has an issue, I have got an issue too, I got an issue from previous experience. He has, I would like to him to explain the issues that they have to cause this to be that way. I will explain the issues I have with it, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
I don't know what to say. I don't know if I...
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance for the sake of discussion. I think this is something we need, and I don't think the, Mr. Spader understands the intent. I think we were trying to give him an opportunity to try to understand that better in conversations with planning staff. But this is really not a motor home, live-in, 365-day-a-year issue. This is a life-safety issue for those that turn that little plot in a campground into a home. It's not the motor home. And my guess that at Mr. Spader's campground, he would never have an issue. But his, we've closed testimony, we have, the testimony is complete, I think.
It is.
But I understand that this has become an issue, not only here, but in other communities, where maybe they don't run as good a campground as Mr. Spader does, so.
I'll second the motion.
Item's been motioned and seconded, all those...
Discussion? Madam Chair? I'm wondering if there would be any feeling to ask for a deferral, to maybe take a second look at the language?
Ken, I don't think that it's, that there's any value in that. I think the 180 days is a big issue, but it's not unreasonable for the greater good to, if they have to move one spot over. I just think it's very reasonable to do that, and I don't see what we're going to gain by deferring it.
It seems as though the safety issue comes in when people are trying to turn the six months into a more permanent situation by adding pieces to it. And that's the piece that would keep them from moving to a different space, so I don't think that the 180 days is unreasonable. Any further discussion?
I guess my question is about the principal place of residence, how it's written. I interpret it to be the ground and not the actual trailer.
Jeff or Shawna, can you confirm that?
Yes, as Teresa alluded to earlier, that if you read the entire thing and not just take anything out of context, it starts with, shall mean a plot of ground, and then it goes on to describe what you do with that plot of ground.
Thank you.
I think this issue just certainly went to a very different place than I thought that it would tonight. I mean, it certainly isn't my intent, as I read it, to do anything that I would perceive as harmful to the operation, knowing that there is a tool in there for people to move around and still be able to locate, even if they wanted to expand the months of the operation of the campground. So, I am a little puzzled by where we're at with it today, because I just, I'm reading it much differently than Dwayne is. And I do understand the issue, it's probably not in Dwayne's campsite, but certainly if in other places, people are adding decks, you know, digging fire, or just doing things that are of a more permanent, that it is a fire safety issue, and I do understand why the ordinance change is in front of us tonight, so I'd be ready to vote.
Okay, call the question. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 13. Is to revise conditional use permit in the I-1 Light Industrial District to allow motor vehicle display and sales, retail trade and services, including motorized sales at 1700 North Cliff Avenue. Staff report.
Good evening, my name is Steve Randall, I'll be representing staff on this and other reports this evening. This is a revised conditional use permit. It had originally come to you as a request to approve motor vehicle display and sales on the subject property, and we had some problems with that after the permit was approved. And with council discussion, it was referred back to you as a revised conditional use permit, because the purpose is to not only use the subject property for motor vehicle display and sales, for which a conditional use permit is required, but at the same time, the applicant is in the business of repossessing auto vehicles, holding them until a license and title can be obtained, and then selling them or moving them off-site. The applicant is also in the business of motorized vehicle assembly and sales, trailers, parts and equipment displayed and sales, and a conditional use permit is required for retail trade and sales in the I-1 Light Industrial District. So, those are new parts to the plan, as you're going to consider it this evening. I've discussed the new plan with the applicant, we've gone over it a couple times, visited the site, prepared the document, as you see on the screen before you. The applicant is agreeable to locating the display aspects of his business, the assembly of parts, the storage of parts, the screening of inoperable or unlicensed vehicles until he has time to get those licenses and get them moved off-site, and to meet the setback requirements. Setback variance had been approved by the Board of Adjustment, allowing him to locate parking in the front yard on the south side of the property. He is meeting the setback requirement along Cliff Avenue, which of course is prime importance, I think, for visibility along Cliff. The applicant is here this evening to respond to any questions that you might have. He has signed off on the plan and is prepared to talk to you about a schedule for completing those improvements. He is aware that a variance still is required for the fence height. He requires a six-foot fence for security reasons around the areas where he's locating his parking. And he could respond to a question on that, but the Board of Adjustment would hear that variance, and right now, staff is supporting that request. We've had no calls on it, the signs are posted, and the applicant can respond to your questions. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Is the, excuse me, is the petitioner here?
My name is Steve Scarborough, and my address is 1700 North Cliff.
Mr. Scarborough, do you have anything to add?
No, everything is going fine, except the neighbor raised his land up a couple feet, and the south end of my lot is flooded, so until the waters recede, I won't be able to put a fence in.
The staff...
And there's a six-foot snow pile there.
Okay, the staff report says, though, you are prepared to present us with the schedule as to when you intend to have, be in compliance with the issues?
Yeah, it depends on finishing it, would have to be when the water recedes. I didn't count on him raising the land up two feet right beside me, and then they put six-foot snow piles there. As you can see in the picture, it's, the south end is underwater right now. They took big front-end loaders and piled up the snow there. And there's water a foot and a half deep by the end of the building on the lot line. And it's a drop-off, about two feet drop-off, because they brought in...
Madam Chair?
Quite a few semi-loads.
Yes.
Steve, can we have some sort of a date, May 1st?
I don't think it'll be dry by then on all of it.
May 15th? I think we need to have a firm date and a...
Usually about the middle of June is when a lot of things will dry up, but it depends on how much rain we get in. Because that whole big lot beside me, they sloped everything to drain onto me. They brought it up about two feet, and that left me with a hole. And I don't know what I'm going to do about it yet. That's something that just, you know, and then you can see in the picture, they took a front-end loader and put six-foot snow piles there.
Yeah, because of the issues that we've had, I would be a lot more comfortable with getting a firm date, and your buy-in on it, and shoot for that. I mean, I know that there would be, there could be other circumstances, but I guess I'd like you to stay to date.
A contractor's been dragging his feet with the cold weather a little bit on the second building. The first building is already in place. And then as soon as we get that building in, I can start on some of the fence right away, as soon as the frost goes out of the ground.
It'd be nice if it was done by the end of May, because then our meeting in June, we could look at the progress.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I said it could be completed by the end of May, our meeting the first Wednesday in June, we could see your progress.
That'd be fine.
Anything else for the petitioner? Thank you, Mr. Scarborough.
Madam Chair, if I could talk to staff one more time, Steve? Steve, if we were to put a end-of-May timeframe on this, that's something staff could go out and check. If there are weather issues, that's something that staff could report back to us. Is, would staff have a problem with us putting a timeframe like that on the end?
Well, that's reasonable, and as Mr. Scarborough mentioned, he does have a problem that's been caused by a neighbor, as far as one end of his property, you know? If you have to swim in order to put in a fence post, that's not good.
When he is complete and by June 1st say it's complete, that will have been, staff will have been out there, looked at this plan that's presented to us and would come back to us and say, hey, it's, it's done and...
Be willing to do that if you want to put that stipulation on there.
I think we probably would. If, if it isn't, if something isn't quite right to this, you'd advise him?
That's correct.
And also advise us.
Yes.
Thank you, Steve.
Anybody from the audience care to have any, say anything on this particular item? No? Commission action?
I'd like to make a motion for item 13 with a stipulation that the work be completed by May 31st.
I'll second. Item's been motioned and seconded. Commission discussion?
And I think that would be a report back from staff to us at the June meeting saying that, hey, we've been out there and it's meeting the rules and regs and...
Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
That was opposed? Item number 14. Motion carries. Item number 14. Is a future land use amendment to allow changes in future land uses to reallocate single-family residential, multifamily residential, office and mixed-use future land uses at the northwest corner of the intersection at West 54th Street and North Marion Road. Staff report, please.
This, uh, future land use plan amendment is brought to you by the applicant, Diane Decoyer, representing the owner, Universal Properties LLC, and the request is to allow changes in future land uses to accommodate mixed-use development, multifamily development, and single-family residential, uh, development. The, in this allocation on the map that you see in front of you, uh, the mixed-use is located along Marion Road. There's a multifamily, uh, residential component along the north, uh, half of the east, or the west half of the property and the rest of it is single-family to match single-family that is planned to the south. We do have, uh, uh, an area here that is rapidly developed with residential and supporting commercial services and a university addition, which, uh, is a campus that is, uh, developing to the east and we're expecting that this 81.5 acre site, uh, will develop with compatible uses, using the mixed-use development, uh, theme of a residential development with supporting commercial. The applicant has, uh, broken out their allocation of land uses into single-family residential is approximately 30 acres, multifamily residential is 9.2 acres and a mixed-use component of 42.8 acres. They've, uh, answered all of the application items, uh, and just, uh, to summarize, it being a residential development with supporting commercial, that, uh, we're looking for a maximum of 50% commercial and up to 30% office, leaving 20% for multifamily. When they come back with their, uh, zoning requests and some design concepts that you would have a chance to review then before you actually approve the zoning for those uses. I believe that that will be in the form of a planned development district. We're going to be working on the sub-area regulations between now and then and the applicant has also contracted for a traffic impact study, uh, for this area. So, we feel that everything is in place for a successful, uh, development of these uses and we're recommending approval. Uh, there has been some discussion with adjacent property owners and I believe they're represented here this evening. They can speak for themselves. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve? Is the petitioner here, please?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission. Uh, I'm not Diane Decoyer. She is unavailable this evening. Um, my name is Monty Miller. I'm from Sayre Associates, 216 South Duluth Avenue and we're the engineers on the project and, and we've been involved in this project since last August and there's been a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, creative ideas that come out of this and I think we're using a lot of ideas that came out of, of shape Sioux Falls with regard to mixed uses and that kind of thing and, and, uh, uh, it's been a pleasure being a part of this project and, and I'd be happy to answer any, any questions you might have.
Thank you, Monty. Any questions for Monty? You'd like to go?
We, we plan to move ahead with a preliminary subdivision plan this, this coming month and keep the process going. Thank you.
Thank you, Monty. Anyone from the audience that would care to discuss this particular issue? None? Okay. I'll look for commission action.
A move for approval of item 14.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Item number 14 carries. Item number 15 is a future land use amendment to allow changes in future land use to allo- to reallocate single-family residential, multifamily residential, office and commercial future land uses at the northeast corner of South Dakota Highway 11 and East 41st Street. Staff report.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Dave Loveland. I'll be representing staff on this and later items. Uh, the land, the petition before you is for 160 acres on the southeast corner of the city. Um, the applicant is requesting to designate land uses in order to begin preparations for development. The current, the district right now is currently zoned agricultural. Um, as you can note in your staff report, you'll see that, that the current future land use map designates 146 of these acres as single-family and 13 of them as multifamily. Um, the applicant is asking for approximate, and these are approximate estimate, estimations at this moment, um, approximately 26 acres of commercial, 13 acres of mixed-use, 22 of office, 29 of multifamily and then 72 of single-family residential. Uh, we are supportive of the land use changes as proposed, given the transition from office and multifamily into the single-family neighborhood. South Dakota 100 is not planned to be a commercial corridor. However, the applicant's designation of some areas to be mixed will provide a central neighborhood town center concept to serve this area. The commercial area should be designed to provide support services for the surrounding residential properties. Infrastructure improvements in this area such as sewer and road networks have either been completed or are in the five-year capital improvements plan and the transportation improvement plan. Commercial land uses generally should be, should be limited to arterial and highway intersections with office and multifamily acting as transitional uses further into the section, uh, but, and the applicant will be required to further refine the mixed-use and commercial portions of the project at the time of the rezoning application in order to ensure the commercial and mixed-use portions provide support services to surrounding office and residential development and do not act, do not act as a regional large, as regional large-scale retailing. Uh, in addition to other infrastructure improvements, East 41st Street was improved during the 2009 construction cycle to accommodate, uh, continuing and future development in this area and future 100, South Dakota 100 improvements, as you know, the first mile was completed from Arrowhead Parkway to 26th Street this past year, um, and from 26th to 57th is currently scheduled in the state transportation improvement program for 2012. Uh, the internal street network is response, is a responsibility of the applicant, but access permits need to be granted by the Public Works Office for points of access onto East 41st Street. Because the subject application accommodates future land uses and proposed development should be consistent with the physical characteristics of surrounding neighborhoods, we are recommending approval of this future land use amendment. Can you answer any questions?
David?
Yeah.
On the Highway 100, uh, will they have to apply for an access permit or is there gonna be no access on Highway?
There won't be and Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there may be one at 33rd Street, there, which would be their north property line, um, but there, there won't be any additional access points onto South 100.
So, their access will either have to come in from 33rd or 41st?
That's correct.
Typically quarter-mile?
It's, yeah, yep, that's correct. And I think you see, I can't, uh, remember the street name, but you can actually see it to the south, right there where the commercial lines up. Steve's highlighting right there.
When you say no major, uh, retail, 26 acres is, is a fair amount of, of commercial.
Right.
But that's where if they came in and say a Keymart wanted to put a store there, staff would probably frown on something like that?
Well, it, you know, it depends on, on how they present their rezoning application. At this time, we can support commercial designation because commercial can be a variety of anything from neighborhood commercial as far as a C1 zoning designation to C4. And so, at this point, we just don't know exactly what they're, you know, we're okay with this, but, um, you know, as the rezoning comes forward, we'll be talking to the applicant and speaking about what we, what we can see there.
Okay, thank you, David.
Yep.
Just a comment. I was telling Ken, I think it's kind of interesting to notice the shape that's entering these future land use amendment plans.
Yeah, I think he's got, I think that the applicant has a road network that he's sort, that he's, has an idea of what he wants and this town center would be surrounded, this mixed-use town center would be surrounded by it, but yeah, yeah, so, a little bit more design.
It's not square boxes?
No.
Thank you, Dave. Is the petitioner present?
Perry Gold, uh, 30, or 4405 North Ridge Circle, representing the landowners.
Any questions for Perry? No? Thank you, Perry.
Yeah.
Is anyone here from the audience that would care to discuss item number 15? No? Commission action?
Move for approval, item 15.
I would second.
Item has been motioned and seconded. Discussion? None? All those in favor approving item number 15, say yes.
Yes.
That was opposed? Same sign? Item number 15 carries. Item number 16 is a major amendment in Sub Area A of the Scooter Plan Development District to revise the sub-area regulations by adding retail trade and service as allowed use at 801 North Cliff Avenue. Staff report.
Thank you. Uh, the applicant is Marsha Hoyland. I think you may remember this from last year when Dan Hoyland came for, came before you to create the PD and then for a final development plan for a scooter shop. They were, they constructed a multi-tenant commercial building and this half of the tenant, they'd like to add a consignment store to it. Um, the area of the size, or the area of the parcel is, uh, about a third of an acre and like I said, the, the planned development district itself was created in February of 2008 and the final development plan for construction of the building was approved by this body in June of 2008. Um, just for your information, there is, Joe Foss High School is across the street and Woodyard Park both lie, and Woodyard Park is just to its south. They both lie within 600 feet of the subject property and additionally, two liquor licenses are already established at Franklin Food Market and IU General Store in the area. Um, one of the reasons that I point that out is because you'll note in the sub-area regulations that the retail trade and service was restricted to consignment uses only. Um, so therefore, if any additional, anything other than the consignment use came before you, or, you know, was, was to go in there, it would have to come before you for your approval. Um, because the subject application provides limited impact to surrounding properties and requires a complete plan check, by zoning and building services, we are recommending approval of the major amendment with the sub-area regulations that are attached to your report. So, that concludes staff report. We received no comments either on this application.
Madam Chair, David, thank you for, uh, that was my concern until I read through the report. This would be for this applicant only.
Yep.
If this, uh, if it was something other, this would be a consignment shop. If this individual were to sell their business and it continued on as a consignment shop, that would be okay?
That would be okay. It's not for the applicant, it's for the use.
For the use.
Yep.
Thank you, David.
Yep.
Anything else for Dave? Thank you, Dave. Is the petitioner present?
Absolutely. I hear him around. Marsha Hoyland, 1000 North Van Nuys.
Anybody have any questions of Marsha? Okay, well, thank you, Marsha. Anybody from the audience care to speak on this item? No? I'll look for commission action?
Move for approval for, uh, item 16.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Item number 16 passes. Item number 17 is a rezone from the Sub Area B of the Brooks Crossing in addition to the C4 Planned Commercial District for allowed uses at East 57th Street and South Dubuque Avenue. Staff report.
Uh, this rezoning request is to rezone from a planned development district, uh, Brooks Crossing, Sub Area B, to the C4 Planned Commercial District, conventional zoning. And the applicant has stated the intentions to develop a bank and a convenience store with gas dispensing at this subject property, which is the East 57th Street and South Dubuque Avenue intersection and it's about a 2.1 acre site, currently is vacant. Comprehensive plan does call for multifamily residential. However, the project, or the subject property is zoned into a planned development district, uh, which then is, takes precedence over the land use. Even if we did look at changing the land use, it would not be required because it's less than five acres or a 20% change in use. To the north, it continues to be Brooks Crossing Planned Development District for future multifamily residential and to the south, we're still in the county, is agricultural. To the east, it's RS2 and, uh, that was approved for a rezoning this evening for a church, Gloria De E. And to the west, it continues to be Brooks Crossing Planned Development District for future multifamily residential. The applicant is indicating only one lot for development and as such, under conventional zoning, you would see it again for a conditional use on a site greater than an acre, which would give you the opportunity to review, uh, uh, the considerations for development. This will be the first instance of zoning out of a planned development district that is not developed to one that, uh, is a conventional zoning district. In the past, it has been planning staff or the planning department that has requested zoning from planned development district to a conventional zoning district for the purpose of existing or developed uses. Uh, that's for your information. In the C4 Planned Commercial District, there are a number of uses that would be allowed. The applicant has indicated their intent for the development of the bank and the convenience store. However, in the C4 district, should the property change ownership, I've listed all of the uses that could go in there, either by conditional use or as permitted special use, subject to conditions. That is always the case with conventional zoning. Um, the uses that are allowed as permitted special or conditional are allowed, but you would have the chance to review those and add any conditions for approval that you might, might want. Because the subject property is located on a minor arterial street as an extension and an intersection of a residential collector street, staff can support a commercial development plan that serves the neighborhood. The applicant should, uh, coordinate street access requirements with city engineering and access should be coordinated with the church in their eventual development plan, uh, as they come forward for building permits. For access to Dubuque Avenue, the applicant is responsible for contacting neighboring, neighboring property owners for their comments on the proposed development. We have not had any calls to staff from adjacent property owners and staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve?
Madam Chair, when I drove out there, uh, there's a building under construction. That would be the church that's currently under construction?
No, I believe that would be on the west side of Dubuque and that would be a multifamily residential complex.
Hmm. Is, is this on 41st?
Uh, no, we're out, uh, out on 57th.
Wow, I went to the wrong location, Steve.
I do that myself.
I was confused. Uh, the zoning on the other, uh, we're on a corner here. Will the zoning match up to the east, south and southeast as far as commercial zoning also?
Uh, to the south, it's still outside the city and we have, we do not have anything included in the future land use plan for properties to the... uh, included in the future land use plan for properties to the, to the south. To the east, uh, there had been some discussion previously about putting commercial on that corner as part of the Gloria de E development of the property. However, they discovered that they needed the entire property for the church and therefore, uh, the need for commercial services was moved across the street to this corner.
Steve, what would be the advantage to the petitioner to go from a PD to a straight conventional zone? You say that's the first time you've seen it happen, other than staff recommending it?
Uh, I guess that would be a good question for the applicant.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Is anything else for Steve? No? Petitioner, please?
Daryl Verick, uh, eight twelve South Minnesota Avenue, Verick Commercial Real Estate. The piece that we're trying to rezone there, the stuff to the, uh, west of it is zoned for office, multifamily, all the way along Fifty-seventh. And we tried to get the church piece zoned across the street, which, uh, you guys had approved, the planning commission approved, but they withdrew it before it got to city council because they had to move their church over because of the wetlands. So, instead of having it on the church side, we put it on this side. And all the access issues are worked out as far as, uh, to the south. Uh, that's Bill Hobson's land. That is the collector's street, Dubuque, from Fifty-seventh to Forty-first. And then, um, going to the south, Hobson's will be the collector's street that goes all the way down through his property to the, uh, uh, Sixty-ninth Street. And we've worked out all those roads with HDR and the drainage study and everything else out there. Uh, reason we wanted to do this is we've tried to put it on the church property and they can't make it work, so we've got a convenience store and a bank that are looking at that corner. And as far as answering your question for the, uh, zoning part of it, I never really did think about it. I just put it in there to do it because we couldn't do it at the church.
I would think you could have done the same thing under the PD.
Right.
Designation.
I didn't even think about it. I just told Cory at the office to put it in, so. And then that was, Mike Cooper wanted my assurances that we aren't gonna stick a bar or restaurant or any of that stuff in there, which I told him no. No, that goes over on the other end.
Uh-oh, we better vote no on this one, guys. Thank you, David.
And also, there's a, there's a full median cut and a controlled intersection at that corner. There'll be a full intersection with, uh, uh, traffic lights, both north and south access.
Thank you, Darren.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this particular item? Look for commission action?
Madam Chair, I would make the motion to approve the rezoning.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Been motioned and seconded? All those in favor say, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Item K, item number seventeen passes. Item number eighteen is a rezone from Sub Area A of the Hazeltine Plan Development District to the C4 Planned Commercial District for allowed uses at West Benson Road and North Marion Road. Staff?
Now, the applicant, uh, is Steve Van Busker, uh, Hazeltine Partners, uh, and is also representing the owner. Uh, the request is to rezone again from a planned development district, Sub Area B, to the C4 Planned Commercial District. This will be the second time in the city of Sioux Falls that you will see a rezoning from an undeveloped portion of planned development to a conventional zoning district. The purpose for the rezoning is not indicated in the application, and I believe the applicant would like to address that with you this evening. General location is North Marion Road and West Benson Road. The zoning to planned development district was for the purpose of mixed uses as developed and presented in the planned development district sub-area regulations. Those mixed uses included, uh, commercial and office and multifamily on the forty-acre parcel. However, the developer would like it all to be C4 commercial, uh, for unstated reasons. The property is vacant, uh, and to the north, it's vacant in the RA1 RD, to the south, it's agricultural in the county ag. To the east, it's RD, RA1, and C4 in a multifamily residential. And to the west, it's RD and O, office vacant. The allocation is, uh, a straight forty acres for the C4 commercial. The intent, uh, of the planned development district was to provide a commercial development at this location. And, uh, if you look at the future land use plan that was approved, it does indicate commercial. However, the concept that was presented was mixed use and the planned development district was drawn up in that manner. We would like to, uh, discuss with the applicant the possibility of transitional land uses in a conventional zoning, if that's what they wish. Uh, we do not have a plan for that at the present time, and it would place, uh, the burden for, uh, transitional uses outside the subject property. Therefore, staff is recommending deferral until we have a chance to work with the applicant and further define those issues. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve?
Madam Chair, Steve, when this was, uh, approved as a planned development, was that sub-area, uh, tied to commercial zoning?
Uh, the underlying zoning district that was referred to for allowed uses was C4 commercial, that's correct.
So, it, it is hard to imagine what the benefit is here.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Steve, uh, just musing out loud and we'll get an opportunity to visit with the petitioner, uh, next month. By coming to us and representing a PD and getting that approved, and now coming back wanting to do a straight conventional, do we lose a little control? Does this body lose some control of how that's developed and what is developed in there?
In a sense, you do, because the planned development district did call for transitional uses to be provided on-site. A conventional zoning district would not require the transitional uses, therefore you have no, you've lost that control. However, it is a large property, forty acres, and in that sense, you still have control over that through the subdivision planning process. And also, any site within that subdivision that's larger than an acre would require a conditional use.
Uh, one of my associates brings up by going straight conventional, would we see a development plan before we were to grant the zoning?
You could. Uh, when they apply for a preliminary subdivision plan approval, they could disclose the concept for development and even some design features if they wanted to convince you that that subdivision plan would work.
But on a straight zoning, although that isn't necessarily a guarantee that it would be developed as outlined to us, where I think with the PD, if they were going to change a preliminary plan, it would have to come back.
That's correct.
To give us an opportunity to look at it. Staff does not feel uncomfortable? Uh, oh, excuse me, you're asking for a deferral at this point?
Yep.
Very good. Thank you, Steve.
Anybody know where the Van Buskirk's are? They're gone. So, we're assuming they're okay with this deferral?
Yeah, if the applicant is not ready to discuss it with you, I, I believe you could act on the deferral request.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. I'm doubting there's anyone from the audience that would like to discuss this, but if there is, feel free. Okay.
Motion to defer. Second.
All those in favor, or discussion on the deferral? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Item number eighteen is deferred. Item number nineteen is a conditional use permit in the S Industrial District to allow college uses with a hundred and fifty feet of residential property at fourteen eleven West Thirty-third Street.
Good evening again. The, uh, applicant is requesting, is requesting this conditional use permit in order to be able to reclassify an existing apartment complex as a dormitory. The, um, the applicant is Frank Hughes with Augustana College and site is just over a third of an acre. Uh, the current zoning is the S Institutional District. To the north of this property, you'll see that there is RD and RS2 existing residential, which is what's triggering this conditional use permit application. The standard is for any college, theological school, hospital, clinic, or their expansion, the institutional uses, um, need to come before you if they're within a hundred and fifty feet of residential districts to, um, allow that, that institutional use there. The reason behind this reclassification, if you will, is that current, current, um, code requires that no more than three unrelated adults live in a single residential unit, um, which, you know, if it's a, if it's an apartment complex, it doesn't apply to dormitory. And so, with them wanting to classify this as a dormitory, they can do that, which would allow them to have four or five students in each unit, um, but they have to get their conditional use permit to allow the dormitory within a hundred and fifty feet of residential uses. So, we are, um, comfortable with this application and we are recommending approval. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave? Is the petitioner here, please?
Good evening. Frank Hughes, Augustana College, two thousand and one South Summit.
Any question?
Madam Chair, Frank, you're gonna, are you planning to park any trailers here for more than six months?
I hope not. Just wanted to make sure.
Madam Chair, Frank, um, I, I like what you've done with the, uh, theme houses around other parts.
Thank you.
On the outskirts of the college. Is this gonna be a theme house or just dormitory?
No, this, this will not be a theme house. This will be similar, although on a somewhat smaller scale, it'll be similar to our Summit apartments or to our Duluth apartments, so it, it will not be a theme house.
Frank, if, uh, I remember correctly, with the theme houses, I think, uh, students went through a bit of an application process as far as being allowed to live there. I think your security kept an eye, keeps an eye on some of the theme houses. I think the students are kept to a little bit higher, uh, a higher level of accountability. Is that the same concept, concept here with the dormitory concept?
Well, there isn't necessarily the screening process in terms of a group coming together with a community service project, for instance. That would not apply here, but everything else would in terms of, uh, rules and policies, uh, security involvement, that sort of thing. All of those things would still be in place.
So, if there is a concern, if there is a problem and a neighbor calls staff with an issue, you're the one to go to. You address the problem and, and get it corrected.
Correct, yes.
Thank you, Frank.
What, what is the number that you do intend to have in that building?
Well, the initial request for, was at least four per unit. And what, what we have there are three spacious bedrooms per unit, uh, on two levels, so there's a lot of room. There's, you know, potentially five could very easily be placed in each unit, uh, but the initial request is, what we're thinking is four. But that could, that could change.
You don't expect it to be more than five, though?
No.
This is walking distance to the college.
Correct. It's immediately, uh, west of the Omen Center.
In off-street parking, you've got accessibility for how many cars?
Well, we have, in addition to the nine, we have nine parking stalls in the parking lot immediately to the south of this building.
Okay.
We also have five single-stall garages, which are part of this facility. Then we also have four hundred spaces in the Omen Center, which is straight to the east.
Can we depend on the kids to use the parking lot or? Uh, I don't think there's parking on Thirty-third.
There is no, no parking on Thirty-third, yeah.
Thank you, Frank.
Any other questions for Frank? Thank you, Frank. Anyone from the audience care to comment on this particular item?
I'll move for approval of item nineteen. Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? No? All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number twenty is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow an off-premise sign within six hundred feet of a cemetery at thirty-nine hundred East Tenth Street.
Uh, thank you. The applicant is Brett Mentke, who is an agent for O2 Media. I actually believe he'll be represented tonight by Larry Wentz with O2 Media. The general location of this, of this spot is thirty-nine hundred East Tenth Street, if you're familiar with East Tenth, Auto Wash. Uh, the areas, the area of the site is one point one-six acres and the existing zoning is the C2 General Commercial District. The standard that we consider for off-premise signs, um, being less, it, you know, it, the, it's to, we can normally allow a, a, an off-premise sign up to two hundred and eighty-eight square feet without it being a conditional use permit. The reason it's before you tonight is because it's within six hundred feet of a cemetery, school, or park. And the, um, standard that we generally use to look at these is that off-premise signs shall be located on the site in a manner that will minimize the negative effects of the sign. Off-premise signs shall be encouraged to be of a height that allows them to be seen but not so high as to permit visual pollution in the area. These signs should be required to be spaced a sufficient distance from each other to avoid the negative impact of several large signs concentrated in one area. Signs, and we have, we have looked at the distance and it does meet distance requirements from other, other proposed billboards, um, or existing. And signs shall be reviewed and special consideration given for the following aesthetic quality category: structure, numbers, number and design of support poles, size, shape, color, maximum height, maximum area, lighting, electronics, extension, and eye catchers. Um, we are, we did advise the applicant to contact Hills of Rest Cemetery because it's that location which triggered the conditional use permit requirement. Um, and as, as you probably have read in your staff report, as of, as of the drafting of the staff report, we hadn't received comments yet, but just in time to mail out your packets, we received an opposition letter from Phil Schmitz, who is the general manager, I believe, of Hills of Rest. And so, um, he, I think, is here and, uh, you can ask him any questions that, that you may have. In addition to this, and this isn't in your staff report, but upon further conversation with the applicant in dealing with our, our recommendation, which is for approval, and then the condition is that the off-premise sign shall be a static billboard with no electronic message display. In discussing this with the, um, with the applicant, we discovered that the application had, um, we had erroneous information about what their intent was and, and we were, um, and the intent is, I believe, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but to move the existing electronic billboard at, at, near the Applebee's parking lot, just to the west of the site, to this location. So, it would be an electronic billboard that they're, that they're requesting. We haven't been, we have not conducted a review based upon an electronic billboard, so we, we don't have a comment on that right now.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Dave?
Yep.
Would that not create a, a reason for you to ask for a deferral?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, it, it does. We, we're standing by our recommendation for approval of a static billboard, um, without an electronic. If the applicant wishes to have something else, this is, this was revealed to us in a phone call on Monday. So, if the applicant wishes to have the electronic billboard, then he needs to discuss that with you and ask to strike the condition.
Dave, you mentioned that because this is close to, there were three things, a school, a cemetery?
Yep.
What was the third?
Park.
Park. Because it's within a certain number of feet of that.
Six hundred.
It requires a conditional use permit.
Yep, that's correct.
You were in receipt from a letter from the cemetery that obviously isn't in favor of this.
Yes, that's correct.
That did not change staff's viewpoint on this?
Well, no, it doesn't because we don't, um, we don't feel that, that we have, um, that it, that the static, that's why we condition it for a static billboard. We think that the electronic may possibly cause some visual problems, but, uh, we haven't, like I said, we haven't reviewed it based upon that. We think a static billboard may be okay, but, um, so that's why, that's the result of our condition.
Thank you, David.
Madam Chair, Dave, a couple of things. I drive by that, uh, piece of property or that business, uh, a lot, and I, I, for the last week, have not seen any posting, uh, which, uh, didn't make sense. And then I also wonder why this, uh, recommendation, uh, for approval, uh, seems to me the recommendation for approval by staff here sort of flies in the face of Shakes Sioux Falls recommendations. for approval by staff here sort of flies in the face of Shakesu Falls recommendations.
Our condition right now, we have to evaluate it based upon our zoning right now and our conditions that we look at right now. We believe that it is in compliant as a static billboard with the standard that I've read to you tonight. As far as the posting itself, we checked yesterday and didn't see them either. And so in contacting the applicant, we were informed that they have posted them, but, and they have signed an affidavit saying that they did. I believe that the location, they told me that the posting occurred at was on the street, city light poles.
Instead of the property, it was on the right, in the right of way?
That's correct. That's what I understood.
Madam Chair, Dave, the houses that are on Meyer Lane are single, they're single-family houses, correct?
Yes.
How far would this sign be from?
The sign would be on the east, that southeast corner where Steve's highlighting on your screen right now, so it would be directly.
That's going to be pretty close to?
That's going to be right next to them.
And there's nothing in the ordinance about that?
Not necessarily. I mean, that's the evaluation, that's the trigger of the conditional use permit. I mean, that's why it comes to the Planning Commission for its review. So you have to evaluate that based upon, based upon the standard that I've read to you tonight.
Dave, we don't have any current billboards on the north side of East 10th Street.
Not that I'm aware. The ones that I do know about are on the east side, or on the south side, excuse me. One's a little bit further down, you can see that. That's the closest one that Steve's highlighting on your screen. It's about 1,200 feet away from this proposed site. And then the other one that, there's a little yellow dot to the west, I believe is actually the one that they're proposing to relocate.
Anything else for Dave? Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner present?
Hi, Larry Wedge, representing O2 Media, 2309 West 50th Street. Unfortunately, it took, a sign company has to pull the permit. I represent the company that, we own the signs, but a company like Pride Neon has to be the one who pulls the permit and posts the property, so to speak. So kind of out of my control. Also, because of that process, I did not get to speak to staff until after the permit was pulled and then I explained what our intent was. So I didn't know about the stipulation until after the fact. Really, our plan is to move the billboard that you see up there, the yellow dot, down to that location. It's obstructed, the east-facing. We also have a west-facing one that's unobstructed, and so that was our plan. Facing west would be most likely a static billboard, and so that's where we're at with it.
Any questions for Mr. Wedge?
Larry, that particular sign you want to move is electronic sign?
Correct. Again, the off-premise electronic billboard is pretty strictly regulated by zoning, so aesthetically, I think, I believe it's eight seconds is your minimum.
A maximum?
Click, minimum.
No.
It can't be less than that. I think the intent is not to have a flashing sign, so in essence, it, for traffic going by, it somewhat becomes a static sign.
Where do you have other electronic signs by residential areas in town?
We were pretty limited. We moved, we had one on 12th and West, which is sitting on top of a house, basically. That board, we moved to the Empire Mall. It's now an on-premise sign. And we'll replace that one with the static again because of obstructions and the cost of an electronic sign. It makes more sense to have a static one. And that, it's basically sitting on top of a house, so.
Anything else? No? Thank you, Larry. Anybody from the audience care to discuss this item?
My folks, Phil Schmitz, 300 North Chapel Hill Road. I'm here representing Hills Arrest Memorial Park this evening. Hopefully you got my letter, and my feelings still haven't changed. I don't know how many of you have ever been inside Hills Arrest Cemetery, in particular in that area, but when the auto wash went in, it, and it's their property, they, there's a large concrete wall back there, and so all those, those property owners that have bought, I mean, Hills Arrest has been there since 1933, all those property owners, you know, they've lost something by owning property there prior to the auto wash. And even though, you know, businesses have the right to, you know, to do things, it has detracted greatly from the aesthetics of the cemetery. We think that the sign, any sign going up along that area will do the same thing. I got to honestly say that I get complaints every year because of that, and I just think this is one more thing that will, you know, bring more complaints to these people. They go there to, you know, visit a loved one's gravesite, and many of those people had been interred prior to the building, and they aren't going to move. Signs come and go, content of signs changes, and you're actually, you're much lower because of, 10th Street has been changed several times in height over the years, and so it's a low area down in there. So when you go, I mean, you just, your natural inclination is to look up when you're standing in that space. So I'm not in favor of it. I speak on behalf of the cemetery and the property owners there.
Thank you, Phil. Any questions?
Madam Chair, Phil, before you sit down?
Sure.
You're opposed to any sort of off-premise sign?
That's accurate.
And not, it doesn't matter to you whether it's electronic or billboard or static?
Yeah, I'm even, I mean, I'm even more opposed to electronic sign, but just any kind of sign that would detract from, from just the natural peace and serenity that is in the cemetery. And you don't get the full value of it till you're inside the cemetery looking back out, you know? When you're driving by, it's one thing, but, and content. I mean, you know, I drove around the other cemeteries to look, and the only one that I could find that was in what I would guess to be 600 feet was at Woodlawn Cemetery on a corner. There's one there, but their trees are much more mature and you would have a hard time seeing that sign from inside the cemetery. I mean, I was looking for it so I could do that, but this is wide open. I mean, I've spent a considerable amount of money trying to plant large, mature trees, you know, larger than 20 feet, just to cover up that wall, and I can't, I can't figure out a way to obstruct the sign from the, I mean, to obstruct the sign from the inside because Hills Arrest is part of the flood plan for the city of Shakesu Falls, and so all that water comes in there, and you can't, you can't, you can't put things in the way of that to disguise it, you know? And it would take quite a few years for it to grow up anyway. So to answer your question, Meredith, I am opposed to whether it's static or whether it's electronic, I'm opposed to it.
Phil, how long has that car wash been there? Do you recall? It's quite a few years, isn't it?
Pardon me?
It's been there quite a few years.
I'm going to say 10 years, maybe a little longer. You know, I came in '85 and, you know, you just kind of lose track of time, but I would say at least 10 years. From the other business side, I mean, I use the car wash daily for my other business, so, I mean, you know, we have a good relationship. I just don't agree with them on this issue, so.
Yes. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this? Seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Madam Chair, I struggled with this. I kind of look at the cemetery as very much the same as a park, and I'm more in favor of fewer signs than more signs, but in particular where it's this close to a residential area and this close to what I consider a pretty, a very pleasant view going west on 10th Street. So I'm going to make a motion to deny the conditional use permit in hopes that O2 can find another site somewhere where it's less disruptive.
I agree with Meredith and will second that.
I look at this, if this was the park department coming up with, against it, the school system, I think we would listen. I think if this was an application that there wasn't any opposition to by one of these three entities, I could maybe be more open-minded about it, but I feel I agree with Lynette and Meredith on this particular situation.
I agree also. When you look at the beauty there and then the homes, it's just not the right place.
Motion in second for denial. All those in favor denying the application signify by saying yes.
Yes.
The motion, excuse me, the motion carries and the application is denied. Item number 21 is a final development plan in Sub Area A of the Tufti Plan Development District to construct motor vehicle display at 4030 South Grange Drive. Staff report?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to expand the motor vehicle display area across property boundaries, which is what's triggering the final development plan. The Tufti Plan Development District was created in the spring of 1996 for the sole purpose of motor vehicle display, sale, service, and repair. This is the only allowed use in the PD, and since the creation of the PD, the Planning Commission has approved a final development plan in 2003 for the construction of the current motor vehicle dealership. The site is about 2.5 acres and is located at 4030 South Grange Drive. The underlying zoning district in this area is the I-1 Light Industrial District, and that provides the base requirements for density, area, yard, and height regulations. One of the issues that the applicant is going to have to deal with is that the future extension of 49th Street runs along their north property boundary, and on their plans, they have shown access to that. They'll need to confirm that access and request for an access permit from the Public Works Other considerations, a landscape plan was not submitted with this application at this time. A check indicated that 46 trees will be required on-site, including 37 trees and required setbacks and nine trees in the parking islands. Beyond that, because the subject application conforms to the intent of the approved planned development district and meets required regulations, staff recommends approval of the final development plan with the following stipulation: Black ash, green ash, or other ash tree variety shall comprise no more than 10% of the total deciduous shade tree count as recommended by the city forester in the published street guide. A landscape plan specifying the exact species and variety of each tree shall be submitted as part of the plan check. That concludes staff report. We've received no comments on this item.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave. Is the petitioner here, please?
Paul Korn, Sayore Associates, 215 South Duluth. Answer any questions you might have regarding this proposed plan?
Questions for Paul? Kenny, I can't see you, so you better speak up.
You're going to have to get a taller chair, Madam Chair.
Maybe we're just really big monitor.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Anybody from the audience care to discuss this? No? I'll look for commission action.
I'll move for approval of item 21 with stipulation, excuse me, second.
Any discussion? Item's been moved in seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 22 is a preliminary subdivision plan for Briarwood Estates addition to develop commercial office apartment and low-density residential uses east of South Vicomore Avenue between East 57th and East 69th Street.
To give a little history on this development, it's a fairly large development that is being developed in phases. You had already approved initial phase development of conventional zoning for planned development district and residential and including commercial, and at the same time, a preliminary subdivision plan was approved for that phase development. Now we're adding to that initial approval with an additional 137.8 acres, including adding to the zoning to conform with the future land use plan and the zoning that was approved. The area totals 137 acres, and included in with your exhibits are the zoning exhibits and the previously approved subdivision plan and the proposed subdivision plan. A breakdown in your report indicates the RS2 district has 76.9 acres with 197 lots, RD district 13 acres with 52 lots, RC conservation being two lots, and planned development being five lots included in that area for 24.4 acres. We've outlined the zoning history for you there. If you have any questions on that, we can go to that. But other than that, it conforms to the criteria for submittal of a preliminary subdivision plan. The approval criteria are listed in your report. Also, the preliminary subdivision plan criteria for review by City Engineers Office and the Planning Office. The applicant is prepared to address any of those items if you wish to look at it. Staff has included in the analysis some considerations that we believe should be addressed in a revised plan. We did receive a revised plan after staff report went out, and so I did not get that into your addendum, and I have it available to throw on the overhead if the applicant would like to do that. But basically, they are issues revolving around engineering-type considerations for access and also planning staff's comments. And those are the three conditions that we would include in a recommendation for approval of the subdivision plan. Those three are, the first one being to relabel tracks five, six, and seven, and eight with the existing zoning, which is Briarwood Estates, South PD. The applicant has indicated that in the revised plan. Because we do not have approval of the revised plan yet by the city engineer, we'll keep that condition in there. The second one is landlocked parcels are not allowed in plans and final plans should not cause adjacent properties to be denied access. There is some discussion going on right now with the applicant about that. They believe that those issues can be addressed in final plans, and when that time for development comes, which is likely to be considerably into the future, that that can be resolved. We're including that as a condition for approval because the subdivision plan as presented to you this evening does not offer a solution for that possibility. And third, to coordinate the extension of roadways and utilities to adjoining properties may be part of that solution, but we're including it as a condition of approval just so that the future review of subdivision plans for final development, engineering, roadways, extension, utilities, and so on, do take into consideration those parcels of property that are not currently owned by the developer. That concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve? Is the petitioner here?
I'm Chuck Point with Ronning Enterprises, 4401 East 6th Street. I have with me tonight Chris Ronning, grandson of our founder and son of our current president. He's helped me with this development, and I hope you don't mind that we're kind of worked on it together and we're here tonight to answer your questions together. You know, I don't have a lot to add. All the things that Steve said are true, and, you know, if there's specific questions, we'll sure answer them for you.
Chuck, did you know you were last on the agenda? Chuck, did you know you were last on the agenda tonight?
You know, I thought about that when I saw the agenda, and I thought a couple of things. One, that Jeff left early and I saw that, and I thought I certainly had made him mad at some point this month. And two, that you could deny, design a new application process that would allow for the bidding in of where you would be on the agenda, and those that are going to be willing to pay a little extra could go home earlier at night, and I certainly, at my age, would be willing to pay extra. So, but I'm not going to make Jeff mad anymore because when I do, then you're going to be last on the agenda.
I wondered if you were in the doghouse.
All right. You have a down one. But not as bad as some other people that were here earlier tonight are going to be tomorrow.
I sure don't have any questions. I think it's a nice looking development, Chuck. Obviously, that young fellow's been some help to you, so.
I do my best.
Attaboy. You got a handful there.
Nothing for Chuck? Thank you. And it doesn't appear that there's anybody else here that would care to discuss this item, so I'll look for some commission action?
Madam Chair, make the motion for approval with the three stipulations.
I'll second. Item's been motioned and seconded. Discussion? I'll look for action? Yes.
Madam Chair, Teresa went out of order there.
Did I? No. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 23 adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Good. All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes. Adjournment.